It is nine AM. I'm going to call the meeting of the Caddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe it's my turn, so we'll get that. All right, we do have our HR Natalie joining us on Zoom this morning. Item number two, call for public comment. Also, I might mention, we are streaming live on YouTube. And if you have a cellphone, if you could silence it and take it out in the hallway, please. Call for public comment. Public comment, we will still take on items that are not on the agenda. And the two phone numbers that individuals can use are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
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 All right. Item number four, action to approve the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two minutes of the Caddington County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, that motion carries. We'll move on to monthly reports of emergency management. We'll start with Andrew.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Andrew.
You prefer to be called Andrew or Andy, or, you know, I always think, what do you want to be called? Just not late for dinner, right?
Yes, turn your mic on.
It's typically been Andrew, but.
Andrew.
I've been called worse.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew.
Um, all right. So for the past month, I mean, the biggest thing is that we officially received the brick grant, which, um, like you guys signed earlier in the month, or like it came up earlier in the month and it was signed. And we sent it back to the state. We got official approval back and everything, so we should be good to go there. We did send out some invitations for that first planning meeting, which I believe some of you may have received as well. There's going to be additional announcements in the newspaper. I mean, this is really like a collaborative effort, you know, for all of the communities to provide input on, you know, disasters, either historical ones that they've seen, so we can anticipate that they're coming up again, or, you know, something that that's new that maybe we don't necessarily quite have, you know, our finger on yet, so. Um, the more input that we can get from there, the better. So the first meeting's going to be on March third at the fire station at one o'clock. So if there's listeners that are interested in being involved in that, feel free to to email me or call me for more details on that, and feel free to to come participate with that.
What time was that again?
Uh, thirteen hundred or one o'clock PM. Um, I guess other things, uh, for the past month, we received some COVID tests that we distributed around the, like, community or communities, and then also the courthouse. Some other small things, communication drill, dive tank inspections. We took care of that last month. I did a CDL course that was offered through the college here and got the commercial learner's permit prior to that deadline, so that's very good because some pretty, I don't know, extend more substantially more extensive standards coming forward.
And costs.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I went to Corson County on a mutual aid request with three members of our search and rescue team to try to try to find somebody. Participated in nine-one-one coordination board, also community partners meeting, which some of you are part of. Tried to close a loop on like a communications thing with who's responding, and I think that, I think that that was a pretty positive resolution that we came to there. Uh, we also had our first spring flood outlook. I think the newspaper even kind of like heard some of that, so, um, uh, lower than average chance for moderate to severe flooding, so, um, at least here, it's looking good, I mean. Um, I did ICS three hundred in Aberdeen last week. That was a three-day course. Um, and also one of the required pieces of training that I needed to get done in the first twelve months, so I got that taken care of, and then other paperwork to get hazmat courses reimbursed. Um, for ongoing tasks, uh, we're continuing to update our monthly reports to remain in compliance with L E M P G. And we're updating our emergency response team contact list and our resources list, which is just people and resources around the community that would be called upon if we were to activate the emergency operations center. Um, upcoming, we have, well, we're kind of like jumping in with the county meet meeting, which I appreciate being able to do. Dustin from State OEM is going to come and just talk about grants portal and some things that, you know, potential grant applicants need to do in order to receive funding. Uh, we also have, uh, well, kind of a dual-purpose meeting for prioritizing our projects for the homeland security. Yeah, homeland security grants, and then also just kind of talking through the initial structure for the E O C. Have some new, well, people in new positions and so forth, so just want to make sure that everybody's in agreeance with, like how that's going to stand up, you know, before before it comes to that, so. Um, as we mentioned before, initial meeting, our planning meeting for the PDM is coming out, and the LEPC is going to be Tuesday, March fifteenth. That's also open to members of the community. Just call for the venue. Um, and then I've got EM one-on-one and one-on-two. Those are just additional courses that are required for me to take in.
Yeah, first. Sorry.
Go ahead.
What day did you say that LEPC meeting was?
The fifteenth.
Okay. At what time?
At noon.
Noon, and we don't know where it's going to be held yet.
Probably Pizza Ranch.
Okay.
Sometimes we'll move them around if if, um, different businesses want to host, but that is rare.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, then the one-on-one and one-on-two I have scheduled for this upcoming month as well. Um, I guess I could talk about the weather a little bit, but outside, it sounds like we're supposed to get another one three inches. Our advisory should be over at six PM.
Good. Couple questions. Um, so the EM courses, are those state-level courses or those federal DHS courses?
Those are FEMA.
Okay.
Courses.
And then, um, said you got called up to Corson County. So how, um, just for people to be aware of, I mean, our our emergency management often gets called called up by other counties to go help with certain things, so. Were were you the only, was ours the only emergency management office called in? Do they call a number of other counties?
No, there were a number of counties. So Brown County came, they had assets that they could use. They've got fat truck up there, which is like, like if it, if the lights were to break under it, it's a.
Right.
I guess into the, so. On land. Uh, we have a search and rescue, um, some, some that's capable of similar things, so we took our our go and uh, radar unit to to try to find the vehicle that fell through the ice.
Madam Chair, I just have a comment. Andrew, you mentioned who's responding. I want to take just a few seconds. My other capacity as the nine-one-one manager to thank you for your efforts on that. We were able to put the interface on our dispatch computers, which will give us a connection with responders for all all of our volunteer fire departments in Caddington County. And we had radio contact, but this is a different web-based interface, and Andrew hooked us up with that dispatch, so we appreciate that. And that's going to help improve the communication between the responders and and those folks out in the field, so thank you, Andrew, for that.
So with that, do they receive that as a text, or how does that get put out there for those that have issues with receiving texts?
Go ahead.
It's, uh, it's, it's kind of interesting, and like, from what I understand of it, there's, there's some radio tones that open specific channels, so, um, you download like this app and it's going to, like, it'll push like the alert through the app, um, and you can listen to like the radio transmission that immediately followed that.
We still have some some radio communication problems in in various areas of our county, like over by South Shore. We've always had issues, and Brad knows this, with, uh, the towers and stuff. And the state's working on that, but it's a work in progress, and it'll probably be another few years yet before it's fixed. But that app will allow our dispatchers to, like Andrew said, to set off a tone, and then they communicate through the app over their cellphone. So as long as they have cellphone service, they'll be able to communicate.
That's.
And in these particular areas, while all of our volunteer fire departments, with the exception of Henry now, are using this app. And and our dispatch centers obviously now using that as well, so we're we're able to communicate with them through the app if we cannot communicate over the radio. So we still want to use radio as primary and the app as backup, but it's it's a neat handy tool for us.
Because then you know who's coming and who's not.
Exactly. Yeah, they just market on their phone that they're en route to the scene or en route to the station or whatever, and we can see that right in dispatch now. So really works to improve communication, so. Thanks, Andrew.
Before you go, Andrew, there's, uh, I know you're modest about this, but I understand that you received some kind of a promotion or award since we saw you last night. Now, do we have to salute and call you a major Andrew now, or what is it, or captain, or colonel, or what is it?
Uh, no, I I was promoted to major.
Promoted to major.
So it officially came through. I mean, it was.
Well, congratulations.
Backed it to October first.
And and we appreciate our employees doing these kinds of things, and it's an excellent example of what we would like to see. Thank you for being involved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you, Andrew.
Major Andrew.
There we go. All right, we'll move on then to the sheriff report.
Morning. Morning, Brad.
Forget, this is for you.
My Brad.
Do what you want with it.
Oh.
It's from a conference.
Sunflower seeds?
It's like a drug test.
Such a drug detoxing.
Test it out in the jails.
All right. We'll get started with the monthly balance sheet for the monthly report here for the month of January. Our bank balance end of January was three thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-four cents. We collected twelve dollars in copy fees, two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents in sheriff's fees, and two hundred fifty dollars in warrant fees for a grand total of two thousand six hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents. Jump to the next page there. We've got it pulled up on the screen. We'll go through some of the activity here at the jail at the very top there. Uh, you'll see, well, I guess the sheriff's office. We'll start with some of the cases and calls for the sheriff's office. For January, we had five hundred and ninety-one cases and calls for service. If you look compared to January of twenty-one, very beginning there was five hundred and twenty-three. So right in line, just a few more than what we've had a year ago at this time. Accidents responded to nine accidents, eighty-one warrants were served, one hundred and eighty-four civil papers were served. There was four thousand six hundred and three transport miles. That's the total of fourteen trips and twenty people that were transported around the area here, so. You scroll on down to the middle of the page here, you'll see our jail stats for the month of January. Our average daily population for January was sixty-three point eight seven. If you look a year ago, you can see we're about twenty higher than what we were then. The numbers have slowly been creeping up. Um, actually, today we were at seventy-two. We've been holding steady around seventy here for most of the month of February. Our high ADP was sixty-nine, and that was on the thirty-first of January. Our low ADP was fifty-eight, and that was on the second of February. We've had nineteen people on the SCRAM bracelet, which is part of the twenty-four-seven program, seven people on the remote breath. We've had seventy-four, forty people on the twice-daily PBT, forty-one people on the twice-weekly UAs, and zero people on the sweat patch for a grand total of one hundred and seven people on a twenty-four-seven program. You got a little graph up there, you'll see that one hundred and seven people on a twenty-four-seven program and sixty-three point eight seven in the jail. So the twenty-four-seven program does help keep people out of our facility. You scroll on down a little bit more.
The good thing about that is that keeps them working as well and keeps their jobs intact, so.
Yes, it helps them be productive and keeps them out of society, so.
Just on the remote breathalyzer, how's that working? It seems to be.
It's actually working really good. Um, like I say, I think I mentioned it before, it's really similar to a phone. Takes a picture of you. Um, they take it with them. You can ping them essentially, so they have to take a breath. Otherwise, it's set up, they have to take a breath a couple times a day to make sure that they're not drinking alcohol. They're actually changing that over as we speak from three G to four G technology, so working on that has to be done here, I think, by today or tomorrow.
Yeah, AT&T's shutting off three G today.
Yeah.
So. So it has, it has a facial recognition of the person, so it knows it's them.
It it actually records a video and it has facial recognition. So when we set that person up, it, um, we take a picture of Lee, and then it it recognizes, like you pick on Lee once in a while, it recognizes that this is Lee doing his PBT. That technology is pretty neat. And like saying, if there's something wrong, if Troy, somebody tries to blow for Lee, it'll show that that's not Lee trying, they're trying to fake the test here. And then, of course, it records the whole thing while they're while they're doing it, so.
No matter how much we look alike, Lee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What kind of deposit do they have to make on this unit?
Deposit? To be honest with you, I don't know off the top of my head.
Or is there a default? I don't think there's a deposit. I think it's part of the the fees to be on the program. There's a thirty-dollar fee to be on the program.
Then there's a, I might be wrong on that. There might be a deposit. I know there's a five-dollar-a-day fee to be on that.
And I guess I'm just assuming this is on a totally inexpensive basis.
Um, I don't know the full price. We haven't had one disappear on us yet, so, even like our SCRAM bracelets, they're, I think, around eighteen hundred dollars for that SCRAM bracelet, which reads your sweat on the ankle to tell if you've been drinking alcohol or not. Those are around fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars when we get restitution for those, so I'm guessing they're real similar in price, so.
That technology.
Yeah. You scroll on down to the bottom here, you'll see for January, for out-of-county contracts, we collected fourteen thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. That doesn't necessarily mean that we had that morning more out-of-county people in our jail at that time. It's just kind of the way billing kind of falls. You'll look, you know, December was lower and, you know, six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine, and then January was fourteen thousand, so this kind of flows with the billing a little bit. Work release, uh, we had collected four thousand one hundred and ten dollars, twenty-four-seven fees, eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and SCRAM fees. We collected four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. No questions on that. I just got a couple other topics here.
Sure.
I don't know if it's one of your other topics, and I don't know if this is where, but Tim, and I heard a report this morning on the juvenile uh, situation and how, um, it's getting to be a problem in, I don't know if it's just in this region or if it's in, kind of in the county. And I I just wondered if you could, I don't know if it's here up on that and could bring us up to date on what's going on, but, you know, for years, we really haven't had the issues with juveniles, and now all of a sudden, there's issues with them in classrooms and all kinds of different things I'm hearing. Is that something that you get involved in at all?
Well, like I say, we do sometimes. Um, we get involved with them in the school level. Um, I know the city Watertown, they have a couple resource officers that are in there, and they will help deal with them. There are some programs that the county is involved with as well here to try and divert, working with the state's attorney and try to divert people from court. Part of the Boys and Girls Club here, um, juvenile detention alternatives. There's a lot of alternatives that the state is kind of working on right now versus just jailing inmates, jailing them and throwing them in jail. If you look at our juvenile ADP, it's been considerably lower than it has, I'd say, even five years ago.
Wait, can I, if I can chime in, because I'm on that, that's one of my liaison duties is on on that committee, the JDAI committee. But our our ADP for juveniles has been less than one person, so it's been really good, and we, and thanks to the JDAI initiative, and so, I think that that's about five years ago when that we got that that number down. It wasn't that big to begin with. The big issue in the in the Boys and Girls Club is critical in this thing, because, um, and we we really appreciate all the the work and the help, and, you know, going to to work with the county on this, because when you do have a a difficult juvenile offender, that you can't always, you can't, we don't have a, like, a permanent place that's open twenty-four hours a day where you can just drop them off, like a safe room, kind of, kind of a setup. You just don't have that for juveniles. So the Boys and Girls Club has a lot of these detention or, um, which diversion programs. So get them involved in something good at the Boys and Girls Club, basically, and, uh, that's what, um, right now, Louis Canfield's the coordinator for that, making that happen. So, um, it's it's absolutely critical, and I think thanks to that, we're kind of headed off of the path, so to speak. But you do hear some challenges from the school resource officers, you know, and I think that was what in the the testimony at the legislature was a lot about, you know, classroom issues. So they were, they were talking about, and what are we going to do about that, so.
And you'll also hear those challenges from law enforcement, too. It'll seem like you'll deal with the same, any, or juvenile, over and over and over at times, then releasing back to, there's a thing called a risk assessment instrument. So when a juvenile commits a crime, and you're going to bring that person to our detention center, uh, the state has this risk assessment instrument. There's a whole bunch of questions on there, and it determines whether or not that juvenile is going to stay with us, or whether that juvenile is going to be released back to their family. So there's a certain score that they hit, whether or not they stay or go. So it's all kind of based on past history, the current charges, uh, the relationship they have with their family. There's a whole bunch of things that are included in with that risk assessment instrument when we decide whether or not they stay or go. So it takes the decisions off law enforcement, it takes decisions off the courts. It's all set up by this rate, is what we call it.
And that was set up through that Senate Bill seventy-three?
Senate Bill seventy-three, yes.
Oh, wow.
But the the actual rate, the whole JDAI, the whole attention to the juvenile problem, yeah, that was from several sessions ago.
And so hopefully, they don't throw that out, and they're going to do a summer study, from what I understand. As far as the schools, and if they're having issues with kids in school, I think they have mechanisms in place that they can, um, deal with that. So if we, if they throw that seventy-three out, we're going to see a lot more juveniles having to go.
I'd say, for instance, last week, when we had that, uh, we had a pursuit that went through a county for about an hour, and, um, at the end of that, we ended up, there was six juveniles in there. The driver of that, that's his third pursuit that he's been in, um, not here, but in other counties. So, um, with any program, those things you got to reevaluate so far along, make sure things are working, and if there's tweaks that need to be made. And those are things that were still in those phases of JDAI, everything to make sure everything is still going in the right direction, so.
Thank you, Brad. My, my, I was concerned, I just, you know, hearing some rumblings of it, I was wondering if there's something that we need to do to gear up, or if we need to do something that we're not doing, that, just, uh, information, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd say that we're probably leading a little charge on some of this here across the state with one of the.
Yeah.
More proactive.
Yeah, more proactive, trying to be ahead of that curve, so.
If they, if they throw that Senate Bill seventy-three out, we lose that funding for that individual at the Boys and Girls Club to help support that. So that's not where we really want to go. It's like, do the summer study for these other places that are having issues, but don't totally throw it all out until they know.
Just to, we did have to budget for that, because that that particular funding stream, we don't know if they're going to.
Right, going into the future.
Yeah, and then, um, the the thing to keep in mind is that the UGS, the the judge that looks at each of these juvenile cases, I mean, Judge Means, I think, right now, when she's on, you know, basically, when when this, when you have an arrest or some thing where you have to think about, do we want to, you have to do the rate, and then you have to think about, well, do we need to incarcerate this individual or not? They're making the call based on, and, you know, all sorts of mechanisms and extra proceedings in place so that you can absolutely minimize the need to incarcerate a juvenile. And then the diversion side, the Boys and Girls Club, is trying to kind of nipping it at the butt, you know, before, for the states, working with the state's attorney's office, so that the person just doesn't technically get involved in in the criminal justice system. So those are, I mean, we got to just keep being proactive, I think, whatever happens in the legislature, so.
One thing, like, yeah, working with Judge Means, she's on our JDAI as well. She's been great to work with on this. If we do have a juvenile that ends up hitting a certain number on the rate and spending the evening with us, she'll see him in court right away the next morning. So it's something that we've worked out with her. She'll help see if there's things that we can do to get that personnel to her, if it's, uh, working with family and everything, too, so.
Good.
Parents got to be on board.
Sounds good. Thank you.
One thing I was just kind of looking at is, like you were looking at jail contracts, working on updating those, looking at changing our amount to ninety-five dollars a day. And then there's a couple other fees in there. If the deputies transport one of someone else's inmate, we're looking at changing those numbers. They haven't been updated for many years, so. That's something that, looking at updating them, I'm going to send off to the other counties for their review, get their signatures, and then it'll be for the next couple months, you'll probably see them coming back from their commission meetings as well, so.
Currently, they're at what, Brad? They're going to go for.
Currently, we're at eighty-five, but we're going to go to ninety-five.
Anything else for us?
That's all I have, I guess.
Several items on the agenda that pertain to you, so I'll just keep moving through then. Item number seven, action to approve the purchase of a live scan fingerprint machine as budgeted for the detention center.
The live scan fingerprint machine. Um, currently, the sheriff's office and jail, what we do is we have, when we're doing fingerprints for people for employment, coming in to get their fingerprints from maybe teachers or for Boys and Girls Club or for whatever position that they're applying for, they have to come into the detention center. Uh, if there's an inmate that's being booked in or we're housing or moving inmates, we can't bring them into the facility right there to actually fingerprint them. Actually fingerprint them, uh, there's issues with timing and trying to get people in and out. So there are times when someone will call and say, is it a good time to come in? Right now, yes, it is, by the time they get here, there may be an inmate brought in or somebody being booked or moved or having issues, so. Then they'll have to sit there for a long time waiting for that, our current machine to be open. Uh, plus there's the benefit, if we were to buy this, this is something that we could leave in the lobby between the sheriff's office and the detention center. Um, and staff can do fingerprints on that machine and get them to them on a timely basis. Right now, we charge ten dollars per set of fingerprints for people that are coming in for employment. Uh, I've worked with, uh, Tim Toomey a little bit, it sounds like the police department's at twenty dollars now. We were looking at up in our fee to the twenty dollars to stay competitive with, um, the police department when we got this. Uh, so last year, just to kind of give you an idea, how many people came in, earned six hundred thirty dollars on a fingerprint. See that number going up a little bit, double if we. Change our fees to twenty instead of ten, and also it'll help streamline the process, get people in and out, and they do come in for fingerprints. And then the safe part is, is for liability reasons, we're not actually bringing them into the detention center, into our work area, workspace.
By Gable, second by Waterman, any other questions or comments?
Five thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars, yes.
And it looks like the annual maintenance contract, Brad, after the first year is seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, so. You almost made enough to pay for the maintenance contract, if you have the fees, you'll be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, like I say, the fees will be a little bit more. We don't make a lot of money on fingerprints, so we're doing a service to the community, because it is a, a law that law enforcement is supposed to do these for. The delivery time, uh, it sounds like we've talked to them recently, it takes a printer and a computer, something that they can send relatively soon. So hopefully within the next couple weeks, our goal will be to have that up and going, so.
It's always, it's always an ongoing question.
Always an ongoing question.
Question on the fees, did, a, a number of the sheriff's fees are governed by statute, is that, this is not one of them?
This is not one of them, from what I've seen.
This is the one where you charge sales tax?
That's.
Calculated backwards.
Yeah.
Yes. That was a bill that was in front of the legislature this year, yes. All right, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Post, that motion carries. Um, action to approve the purchase of training simulator as budgeted for the sheriff and detention center.
All right, we'll see, uh, training quote there for TI, um, it's a. Training simulator that, uh, just kind of, people haven't seen these, it's a large screen. It'll be set up on the wall in the training room downstairs at the sheriff's office below the detention center, and there's a camera. That actually watches the officer, corrections officer or deputy, whoever we have in there, and then. There's also a monitor that goes, puts the, the images out on the screen. So there'll be an instructor that's trained to sit and use the computer, there are firearms and there's OC and there's taser. There's, uh, uh, tools that work with this system. So as you're. Have your officer up there, you can set up a, a live scenario in a secure environment and you can essentially train. Real life scenarios. Communication, de-escalation techniques, et cetera, um, the computer responds to your, if you're de-escalating, it'll. Help de-escalate, the instructor can change that as you're going, as the scenario was live, they can kind of change some of the outcomes and kind of. Ramp it up if they want you to use OC or firearm or taser, um, so it's a real interactive program. Nice thing with this, like I say, with the taser, it'll show where your probes hit, it'll also show for OC. Uh, if you use your OC, it'll show your OC pattern, and if you get a good, um, hit with your taser or OC, the suspect double down, you can still give them commands. It'll also be a, a thing that we can do to supplement some firearms training, there's a program on there where, uh, to help. Today would be a perfect day when we're having a snowstorm here, we can go down there and you can do some more live training with your firearms, uh, the firearm. Say with the handgun kit, it's actually got a recoil system in there, so when you pull the trigger, the, the recoil, actually the action works, so you get in the live. Stimulus, live response. I look at this as, like I say, everybody sees the use of force issues across the country, this is a very good training that. We can do right here in-house, I reached out to Tim, shared it with Tim, my goal is, once we get this up and going, get our people trained. We can train other agencies here, I've reached out to a few other sheriff's offices, uh, our chief of police here locally. Uh, we get them key fobs so they can come in and use it, schedule with us that they can use this as well. Just a great thing that I think we can bring to the area law enforcement, working together.
So this counts then as training towards their hours that they need.
This will count towards training for law enforcement hours, then also, like I said, nice thing about this is, there's. Scenarios in there for corrections officers, so you can, it's a dual purpose thing, it's not just for deputies, or not just for. The corrections officers, we can use it for our court security, there's all kinds of, there's hundreds of different scenarios that are involved, and then they update those every year. Add more and more, uh, those are all included, all the updates are all included. Uh, just kind of, for instance, we've tested and checked out many, many, many different systems. Some very, very expensive systems and some not so very expensive systems, this one fits. And we're, we're looking, it's got enough technology to last us for a while, not something that's kind of behind the curve. Another, for instance, when you're in there and, uh, you can shut the lights off in the room and have a black screen and simulate a dark environment. Then there's a special infrared flashlight that the, you know, deputies or corrections officers can use, that'll. When you turn that on, it lights up the area, so it's a very responsive to you and your movements, if you're going to move. Suspect moves and the, kind of moves with you a little bit, so.
Tim, motion by Gable.
As a budgeted item, the sheriff's office.
You tell a second motion.
Second by Van Duzen, and the cost is thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars. Um, I guess just across the board, you know. Law enforcement are seeing, um, a more ratcheted up individuals that they need to know and be proactive for, so.
One more question, uh, on this, I think it's a good deal, but. City got to take part in the cost of this then.
They're not, um, we're just going to leave it set up in our facility, so we can use. Yeah, like I say, it's a good for five, well, it's good until the computer is done, then we'll have to get a new computer. They estimate seven to eight years life of a computer, then we'd have to buy a new computer from the company. It's not something that we can just buy a new computer locally, have the software put on, they do that for proprietary reasons. But I think we'd have to work with the company to get a new computer, but those costs are, uh, you have the main equipment, um, the cost will be a lot smaller by that actually here.
State is currently, um, the state currently has a training simulator very similar to this that goes around the state. Think you have to reserve it well ahead of time and then you have to go through a course that the state trains you on, and so it's kind of a. Somewhat of a burden for agencies to, to get their hands on that, depending on where it's at in the state, this, uh. I think this, having this technology in-house is going to be valuable, not only for us locally, but regionally. For, for all these different departments, and it could turn into, uh, to something where we could, we could actually lease time to. Different agencies to, to come down and train to eventually, uh, but. I think it's a, it's a win-win, uh, for us.
This is, the, the price seems pretty reasonable for something like this, just. It, it does, like you say, uh, the system that Troy's talking about is called the Milo system from the state, we've tested those out too. Uh, this is a little bit more advanced even, has a little more technology, a little more reaction as well, so, like I say, I think it. It'd be just a good training for our jail staff, our deputies, surrounding area. Help reduce liability, especially with all the use of force issues and all the things that have been happening going around in the nation, so.
And as yet, we have no idea what a computer is going to cost.
That's all part of the system.
This is all part of, when we break it down.
Yeah.
And you have to reorder.
Yeah.
Who knows what that'll be?
Yeah, I, I don't know what that'll be. Yeah, five, seven, eight years, it could be cheaper, could be more expensive.
Don't know six months from now anymore.
I don't know that the computer is, is the computer a special computer, it just runs the software, right?
Just a laptop, it's the software, what you're, and if you already own the software, that's where they said, still got to buy a computer through us, just because you can't. They can't give us the license and just let us put it on, because we could be giving it to anybody and everything, it's a proprietary thing, so.
One more thing, is there, is there yearly maintenance fee on this then?
There is not, there's no yearly maintenance fee.
This is the price then?
This is the, what you get, this is the price. Checked with about thirty other agencies that have got this exact one, and, uh, they think it's great, haven't had any issues, the company's good to work with. Definitely done our homework, so.
All right, anyone else have any other questions here?
Oh, not a question, but a comment, I know you looked at thirty-three thousand, I think that's quite a bit, but if it will help our. Law enforcement people in our community, uh, make them. Feel comfortable in their, their job and maybe keep somebody out of court and maybe somebody out of the morgue. So, the, the, not very much then.
It's more comfortable in the trade, there are also thirty-three thousand dollars, like it's very punitive when it comes to money, which.
Liability issue.
Liability and lawsuits.
Brad, the question that I have, I guess, is, um, are you going to have members of your staff that are trained to operate the system?
Yes.
Okay.
If you, if you look, there's actually a, um, we're up to eight trainees that we can have, and they're actually going to fly here, train us for a two-day event. To set up, operate, make sure the system works, and then some scenario learning the system, so.
All right, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Post, the motion carries. Item number nine, action to approve the purchase of a dishwasher for the detention center as budgeted.
Um, see, in your packet, there you got a quote from Cole Papers, they also do dishwashers in our. Dishwashing detergents and all that stuff right now. System that we have, the dishwasher we have, from what we could tell was put in in ninety-eight when they did the addition. We've been having a lot of issues with it, we've had the service company come in and work on it several different times and service company says it's. You're really close to just dying and you're going to be without a dishwasher, which leaves our, our cooks a little panicked and. So like I say, we got a quote there, it is in the budget for this year, um, you can see the quote, nine thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and seventy-eight cents to replace. Take off the old one and replace the new one.
Second by Waterman, any questions or comments on that?
I'll link this, uh, all, all the, all these three things that we're ordering today for your office, um, will it take, are they? Will they be delivered quickly or do, are we having supply chain stuff?
I, they, they, as of right now, the dishwasher might be out a little bit. Um, the training simulator, it sounds like it's, just not let them know, and get the training set up and it sounds like they have everything, so. Hoping within my springtime is my goal to have these things set up, and that's one of the reasons I'm trying to get these ordered earlier in the year because of. We all know there has been issues, so, the supply chain issues.
Looks like a piece of it coming out of the thirties.
It works, it looks like our old one. Yeah, and they also service them and work on them too, so if we have issues, then it'd be a.
All in favor, say aye. Post, that motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Brad. Item number ten, action to approve the purchase of office furniture for the welfare office as budgeted. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, so you have this information in your packet, um, I'm just looking at furniture for the new hire and then also to replace. The desk for the I-CAP worker that we currently have in the office, I had budgeted for it this budget round. Um, and also, the grant will cover the furniture for the new employee, um. I mentioned at my report that I, I had budgeted lower, um, supply chain issues and all of that have. Bumped up the prices, however, I did contact the grant and they will still cover higher rate. We just have to stay under the total for the grant amount, so that furniture would all, for the community health worker would be covered by the grant. Um, and then that would leave the other desk in there. We got, um, so I went to Office Piece for the proposal. Um, which is what you have in front of you, so basically it is forty, four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixteen cents. For two desk systems, I did look into some used, to see if we could find used furniture. The challenge is the space that we have is really limited, and so finding the right furniture for the space that we have is a real challenge. If the furniture is out there, um, and so that's. Looking into options that really weren't options that would fit in our office that I could find for that, um. We also went and just to explore, looked at some online, Carrie checked out some online options to see if we could find something cheaper, and it was actually. Twenty-four hundred per desk that's not assembled or installed, so it was actually cheaper, which, and I prefer to go local and make sure we have the right equipment. So that's kind of.
To prove.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments, questions?
Yes, I know the quality of furniture, we just had a bunch, uh, purchased ourselves and, uh, good quality furniture and I'm glad to see you're keeping it local, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my preference.
All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Post, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there was a backside, okay, all right. All right, item number eleven, action to approve a bridge inspection resolution, and that was, will be Rick, Highway Superintendent. Good morning.
Hey, Rick. Good morning. This is something we do every year for bridges, we do half, one year and half the next year. And, uh, we have Banner Associates do our bridge inspection. And I have to have you guys sign it so I can get it sent to the state so they can get it going.
Just a formality. Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen, any other comments or questions? During that, all in favor, say aye. Post, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
All right, item number twelve, action to approve a resolution for precinct boundaries upon the new census numbers.
Uh, this is something we have to do every ten years, um. With the new census, there were, there was one section in the city that was moved from precinct A three. To precinct C one, so we have to physically describe the boundaries of all of our precincts. And adopt a resolution for those, also, there was, um. Uh, we needed to insert a dividing line between precincts B three and B four, there never was one, and there's been so much. Expansion up in that area north of Fourteenth Avenue between Seventh Street West and Second Street West, I believe is a, I believe it is, so. The first resi, first resolution just outlines the boundaries, uh, for the precincts within the city of Watertown.
Trying to show the, I'm trying to show the map to.
Oh, okay.
I'm having some issues here, hold on a second.
Yeah, it was just a, a very small piece that was moved from A three, but it, it evened out the, uh, the precincts for districts then.
Well, if someone wants to make a motion. Motion by Gable, second by Johnson, um, just wait and have discussion once you get some.
That's not going to change any layout for us in our districts, I mean, it will just a little bit.
You will lose a little bit and it went to Commissioner David.
Just a few blocks, yeah.
South of Seventh Avenue and north of, I'm not sure what that.
It's a matter, just what they're trying to do is balance the number of the population.
The city has to balance by ward and the precinct part of it is for the county.
Yeah, you gain more up in your other parts, so that's why you lose.
You can still call me if you want.
All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Post, that motion carries. All right, action then, item number thirteen, to approve a resolution for commissioner districts upon the new census numbers, and you have that.
And federal government requires us to be within ten percent, is it, under ten percent variation between your districts? So that's what this resolution is, shows you the, uh, district one through five populations of each precinct within your. Current district.
Vote to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, any comments? Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable, any comments?
This was accomplished with the help of Ryan Hartley from First District, yes.
So it's just so people understand, so the first thing we did was the precinct thing, and then along with the precinct, it's easier to divide it into commissioner districts, as opposed to dividing a precinct. So, just put the, put a whole precinct in one district or another.
We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Alright, item number fourteen, action to approve advertising for seasonal memorial park positions. Steve, if you wanna come up here, is Natalie gonna join in on that as well? Alright, you can both come in here.
I'm here.
Can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, this is to approve for me to advertise for the park, um, maintenance staff out there for the summer help.
Seasonal, how many?
Seasonal, um, four people.
Okay. And we're gonna.
Yep, that's been the same.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any other?
Second by who?
Van Duzen.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Alright, then we need to move on then, action to approve a job description for an assistant weed supervisor position. And hiring or advertising slash hiring of the same.
I'll let Natalie take over on this.
Okay, Natalie.
Alright, uh, yeah, in front of you, you should have the job description, uh, Steve and I have been working to get that updated. This was something that we didn't have formally, as we went through our wage study, this position wasn't there, but. Um, it's very necessary to have this position, especially since we don't have a full-time weed supervisor. She, um, Steve shares his responsibility with facilities, and so this person acts for supervising, coordinating the workers' activity. Um, and a kind of a lead position, so it falls on the wage scale in the seasonal levels, which are up above with the letters. So we have like the A, A, B, B, C, C, this becomes the D, D position on there. And I believe you have a copy of that as well, it should be starting at twenty dollars and fifty-six cents an hour with step one.
To the bottom of there.
Yeah, you can't turn it, so yeah, it's right in there.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description.
Alright, and, um, also then to advertise and hire for that position. Can we do that all at once?
I thought we already did, did we already do the advertisement?
No. This is a new position.
Okay, then.
It's, uh, it's one motion to accept the job description and then advertise and hire.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, that's my motion.
Alright, we have a second to that.
Second.
Second by Waterman, any comments or questions about any of this?
Which, which, um, uh, step was that in the wage scale, Natalie?
Step one.
Above in the seasonal position, so it's a D, D, actually.
Okay, and what, what, what did you say the starting wage would be?
Uh, twenty dollars and fifty-six cents an hour.
Alright, thank you.
Yes.
That I have the right document, thanks.
Yep.
Alright, we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries as well, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next is item number sixteen, and Todd, if you want to come up, action to approve a job description for a deputy veteran service office. And advertising hiring of the same. And you have that for us.
Good morning, I don't know if Natalie's gonna take any of this, or you want me to go with it?
Uh, go ahead, and I can jump in if needed, Todd.
Okay, um, from the veteran service office. Requesting approval of the deputy, a new deputy veteran service officer within the veteran service office. Um, then, a, um, to open and hire a, as a deputy, uh, our vacancy. In the, the upcoming vacancy in the veteran service office. To open that as a, the approved deputy veteran service officer, and then additional funds to cover. Um, costs of administrative specialists leaving for her leave, and some additional, um, basically overlapping training time. To give the new person adequate time to do some online training, and, uh, have a transfer of, uh. Duties with the current administrative specialist, and then there's a brief timeline down there. Projected.
So, I'll make a motion to approve this. So that was the job description and the, and the listing advertising.
I'll say it.
Alright, motion by Gable, second by Johnson, you see it on the pay scale where that would fall in, be under step one, starting with, well.
Am I looking at the right spot, Natalie, on the screen, is it?
Yep, it's pay grade forty, so it's the bottom line on that section, deputy veteran service officer, starting at step one, twenty-five, eleven.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay. Um, now we will move on to action to approve a revised wage scale for the adding of the assistant weed supervisor. And deputy veteran service officer, so that is that document, um. That you have, and it's to add those.
The final step in the process, you have to add those two positions to our current wage scale.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
I'll second that.
Second by Johnson, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Alright, item number eighteen, or discussion possible action to initiate an ordinance to allow religious conference facilities within the zoning. Joint jurisdiction area. So for the next agenda item, I asked Cindy to put it on as discussion of possible action regarding the religious conference facility in the. Jurisdiction area, um, about a month ago, um, Richard Omen was in and addressed us on his desire and plans. To operate a conference facility, short-term, uh, state facility and recreational site. So. Those, those, that area has purposely been, um, omitted from the joint jurisdiction area. Because when that was put together, that was an agreement that city-county worked on together. So with that, I will have Luke come up though and explain the process, if that's a direction that we wanna go to amend that. But I would also add the fact that this will not be a public hearing, um, this is just for board discussion and. Information from staff, since we did get our information from the individual about a month ago. So with that, Luke, if you would come up and explain what that process is, and then we'll go from there.
Sure, I can, good morning commissioners, uh, Commissioner Hampton had reached out to me, uh, a couple of weeks ago and asked if I'd. Since I go around the state talking about planning, policy and process to change and have hours and hours of presentation. Information, if I'd like to talk for three minutes about it, good luck to me, I'll do my best for three minutes here. The, the fact is, uh, starting from a background here briefly, as far as, as far as policy, and then working in the process here. I know I'd said that I'd offer to do so, just basically from a county general, general standpoint of policy, and where, where things come from is the. You know, from the county standpoint, and the cities that review, view planning as a countywide thing. Not just for egg stuff and the stuff that's outside of the county, but include the communities within it. So basically, from the two general main points of the county's land use plan, as well as the municipalities within there, is that we encourage agricultural uses. On land outside of city limits, provide animal agriculture and gravel pits and things like that are far enough from town. And the second tenant, though, is to minimize non-egg development within the growth areas of municipalities. Um, to limit the obstacles and conflicts and carrying out the future land uses in their land use plans. So basically, the bottom line is, the county is for egg uses, uh, with few exceptions in the areas that were zoned differently. Or had stuff going on before we had zoning, uh, and then the county largely tries to stay out of the way of the communities from developing and reserve the space around it. For future development in accordance with their plans, and so the county and the city of Watertown has like, long-term, obviously, we have a lot of stuff. That goes on on the fringe of town, and have for years, uh, and for years talked about having, basically had a gentleman's handshake agreement as far as. You know, we'll, we'll protect what's in the land use plan as far as when you're gonna have commercial development, presidential and industrial development on the fringe of town. Because we've seen over and over again throughout the state, as well as this region, where we have instances where premature development like that happens. And then the community has to grow around it from a standpoint of provision of services, um, whether it be emergency services or sewer water. You fill in the blank, and so that's, that's where all of that comes from. The county and the city formalized that in twenty fifteen, as Commissioner Hampton mentioned, with the, uh, joint jurisdiction ordinance, and in doing so. What was maybe, um, is under, not, not understood as well, is that also adopted the land use policies and plans of both of the communities formally. And in doing so, that's where that comes in, is that the, the plan of the municipality or the city of Watertown in this case, is. Lays out where certain types of uses go on, but not only where, the types of uses and when they go on. And specifically, typically, if it's not a house on thirty-five acres or existing development, existing zoning, um, it is. To remain A or house on thirty-five, and then wait until it gets annexed, except for the uses that are within the joint jurisdiction ordinance. So, when the discussion goes to, um, if, if one, then all, that's where that goes into, is the idea of, we're talking about a policy. As much as a rule, so with that, from going into what would wind up happening, is that the, the request. Of amending the ordinance to allow something on the, uh, fringe of town, a religious conference facility, which, for what it's worth, is a listed use. Outside of the joint jurisdiction area, um, and is something that what's talked about is allowed within. The municipality of Watertown, much less all the other municipalities in, in the county, um. It would take an amendment to the zoning, to the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance, um, but it would also take a policy discussion and amendment to the policies. Uh, largely driven by the city of Watertown at that point as well, but, um, in that, the process goes like this. It needs to be initiated in some way, shape or form. That initiation is typically done by the governing body, uh, whoever handles it, in this case, you get two governing bodies. So, the city or the county could initiate that, that amendment, uh, and it goes to any of the bodies that handle those sorts of things. Planning commissions of both the city and the county, the elected bodies of both the city and the county can. As you're aware, the, uh, planning commission, uh, at the back end of about a two and a half hour meeting, in which they talked about. Planning policy for another use, um, for two-thirds of that meeting ultimately said, uh, no, we don't. We're not interested in initiating the amendment, is basically what it was, so with that, um. Mr. Omen come in and talked about this, and the next step would be for, if you wanted to initiate it, uh, an amendment, or, I mean, obviously, the municipality could. Too, and that's where you sit now, is, do you wanna go about initiating an amendment? And instructing the planning commission to, to go after an amendment, but, uh, keeping in mind that. Uh, just like the city requires a two-thirds majority to, um, of its elected body to override the recommendations of. The planning commission, the same is true for the county, so it'd take four votes, uh, to wind up adopting something the county's planning commission would not be. Interested in, the same thing would be true at the city level too, if, if their planning commission doesn't agree with it at this point. Um, based on the land use plan that's out there, it's more than likely that's where that would land as well, however, I don't wanna speak for the city's planning commission. And so, bottom line is, if, if it's not expected you're gonna have four votes, you probably, um, maybe, maybe a lot of time and putting things off for nothing.
Alright, thank you, Luke, does anyone have any questions of Luke before we move on to our next?
Yeah, I, I, I do, um, so just so, um, kinda get this clear in our minds. So the land use plan, when you talk about a policy change, that's the, that's the land use plan essentially.
Right.
So, so, if this, so, and right now, the, kind of the land use plan for that area, and for the spot we're talking about, is industrial. Or kind of.
Yeah, I, it's a, it's a good question, I, I, there was a point, I, I think, I, I think I know where you're going with that question, and I guess I'll just. I'll get to it, I mean, realistically, that policy that I'm talking about would be, uh, one of two things, one, it's the type of the use that's allowed in the. Rural areas that, that the city is willing to grow around, right, if they annex into that area. Or, uh, and if that idea isn't, isn't expected to be changed, um, that, you know, we're okay to grow around these sorts of things. Then, basically, the policy that's in place today is that that property would need to be annexed in order to operate a use like that. Now, that use that's talked about, um.
That's, okay, that's if we're, in order to comply with the current zoning.
Exactly, to, to comply with the current plans that are out there would need to be, they need to annex neighboring property and annex down to it. And, and do that way, that's the way that the current plans with both the city and the county sit.
Okay.
For it.
So, so if we're to kinda lay this out and say, okay, because we have some people here, and they're, you know, they're obviously curious how this is gonna turn out. Um, so I think, I think most people would say the facility in and of itself is, is a good thing, so the question is, you know, what are the options in front of us? Or in front of, you know, collectively as a community, so one would be to change the joint jurisdiction ordinance, which, that's gonna be a, a, that's second. Policy change, land use plan discussion, and then two bodies, you know, two jurisdictional bodies that would have to approve of that. Um, so that's a, a pretty long process, um, the city could annex that part of it. Um, the other, so then the other two options I see is find a different spot, either in the city or in, out in the county, and then that's, that's a permitted use.
You're exactly right, it would be, it would be something that would be allowed in some, some manner, um, in, in either of those different jurisdictions. Whether it's municipality or whether it's outside of there. And I, I do wanna caveat, I mean, I, we're talking about a long permitting process either way, no matter where it's at, so I mean, I don't wanna say, yep, you just moved to this spot and you're good.
Yeah.
I, I can't say that, but that's, it's, it's at least listed in other places.
But that's, that's, that's something that would not require basically a change to our, our local law to, I mean, that's.
As far as I understand it, no.
So, okay.
Alright, any other questions? Right, if not, thank you, Luke, um, I guess, just in all this discussion, in my opinion, nothing has really changed since two thousand fifteen. When the joint jurisdiction area was adopted, but out of respect to Mr. Omen and everyone, um, I guess they just needed to know where we at. Are we inclined to make an amendment to that joint jurisdiction area? And I guess if that is the direction that this board wants to go, then I would look for a motion in a second to do so. I'm not hearing a motion, so I guess with that, then this board is not inclined to initiate an amendment to the joint jurisdiction area.
Just, just to make a comment, so we're trying to, we're trying to identify one of the, my questions I was asking, comments I was making, just so everybody understands the options. That are, there are options out there, so I think we wanna, probably, before we wanna do that, we wanna understand, you know, what, what the pros and cons are of each of those options. I mean, that's kind of what, that's how I view this, and so, um, to, to go down the road of initiating ordinance changes, a big deal. And so, we wanna understand, you know, all the ups and downs of, of those four options, of, maybe there's other options out there that I'm not thinking of. So, that's kinda how I look at it, just to give you some perspective on that.
Right, it's just that, that way they know going forward, what, what other process they need to go through.
Yeah.
That's what it is. Alright. Um, with that then, we will move on to, um, item number nineteen, action to approve an abatement application.
None today.
Item number twenty, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, we have salary claims, and then we have our credit card billings that normally come at this time of the month. Um, and also our nine-one-one surcharge collection, so we'll take that motion first, and that's the one that. Um and also our nine one one surcharge collection. So we'll take that motion first and that's the one that Troy. So the first one is payment to the Watertown City Finance Office. In the amount of twenty three thousand one hundred and two dollars and twenty seven cents for nine one one surcharge collections. In the month of December and our, for our previous contract with the city.
All right, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any comments, questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries.
And then we have our credit card bills and one additional bill to Prairie Lakes Healthcare Center, which got overlooked. Uh when we paid bills earlier in the month and that is for uh treatment for two inmates. Payment is Prairie Lakes Healthcare for five hundred and five dollars and twenty eight cents. Then we have the Visa Reliabank credit cards uh for the sheriff's office and county jail. One thousand one hundred and forty dollars and seventy one cents and that is for. Various travel expenses. Um block training classes is what it looks like to me. The next one is Visa Reliabank, one thousand fifty five dollars and thirty five cents. That was the emergency management budget and that. Was for various supplies and uh. Fuel costs. Final one is Visa Reliabank in the amount of four hundred and five dollars and ninety two cents. Uh one of which is a credit from Naco for Brenda's canceled registration. In the amount of five hundred twenty five, five hundred and twenty dollars. And then the second one is in the amount of nine hundred and twenty five dollars and ninety two cents for election supplies.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
Uh final one is uh February salary claims in the amount of six hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety nine dollars and sixty seven cents.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. All right, item number twenty one then, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing today.
Uh item number twenty two, action to approve personnel changes.
We have one personnel change. This was a hire in, new hire in the treasurer's office administrative support position. To replace an employee who retired at the end of December. The new employee is Christie Torstensen. She will start on March first at step one seventeen eighty per hour.
Show move.
Motion by Waterman, second by Gable. Comments or questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number twenty three, action to approve travel requests.
No travel request.
Um public notices, passable form of permission.
Tomorrow night at the annual week meeting is the only thing that I've got.
Looks like that's all I have up till next Tuesday. If someone else has anything. Not hearing anything. Um item number twenty five, old business. So any old business? How about new business? Any new? How about anything for the open?
I guess.
Were you, did you have anything for the open? Okay.
No, the only thing just to, just on um, see how I spell ten fifty three? That's the one, the, that's the uh, that the sales tax for counties if they wanna build a jail or courthouse. Um it got heavily amended. Um so was that any, this is, this was uh represented for the counties bill. And um got produced to have sent. Um the required amount of vote was changed to sixty percent of the voters. And with a five year cooling off period, um but it did make it off the House floor and. So now it's going up to the Senate. So just, that's one, one I'm following. There's a number of other things, but.
Right.
Just FYI.
Yes, we're following that as well. Um it pretty much mirrored. You know, what it ended up, except for the cooling off and then.
There's some, there are other differences. It was drafted in a different matter, but.
All right. Any need for an executive session?
Uh before you go to executive session, one, one thing that, I don't know, most, probably a lot of you have been doing this, but I've been listening and reading. And trying to digest the American Rescue Plan. And trying to figure out where we are with that and uh do we need to start. Uh getting our ducks in order as to what we're going to do, what kind of a plan we, or what. What, what direction we wanna go? Yeah, I don't know. Does everybody else?
Yeah, the salary thing is, I think, the direction that.
Can we, can I just explain, kinda follow into what Commissioner Johnson said? So basically, the issue is, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan has four categories. That where you can spend money. One of those is um to make up for lost revenue due to COVID. Well, they changed the formula for how you compute that so that in cases, the advantage of that is um. We don't, in a property tax type setup where for a county, we don't lose much revenue because most people pay their property taxes, you know, in escrow.
Majority of our revenue is property tax.
Yeah, so, so, so that on the, on the good side, but it turns out it didn't impact sales tax that much either for, for our city. But in any event, um so they changed the formula to simply say you can, it's kinda like a standard deduction on your taxes. You can, if it is, you, you can go up to ten million dollars and our allocation is less than that as a county from the federal government under the ARPA. Um act. Um so then you can apply it to general government. And so then, then you gotta think, well, what do you wanna do? That means you can just regular county business, you could spend it on it. So the. So what, what you were referring to, Matt, sure was the, maybe just salary is a possibility. And then you could move that money, which, which simplifies the account of, the accounting needs and the audit needs with the federal government. Which I think our auditor might appreciate um as, make it simple, as simple as possible.
Oh yeah, but you still have to report.
I'm not saying.
Figure out how to. I mean, it's not gonna be an easy, it's not gonna be an easy.
I think.
I mean, all of our departments are, have codes and our.
Right.
Salaries come out of the general fund, out of the road and bridge fund, out of the emergency management fund. It's not an easy thing to track and.
In, in terms of the timeframe that would be required to, to, you know, that we, the reporting requirements go on, would go on, it would be, you could shorten it. Um and that would save some, hopefully some work in that respect.
Actually, I actually had added up what our annual salaries would be and the ones that I thought were applicable and I do not have that information with me right now.
But just to give people a general idea what we're.
Right, and we would have to be careful because we already receive um reimbursement for WIC.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't double, yeah.
Right, you cannot, yeah. I think WIC is probably, any emergency.
Emergency management.
Service officer.
And that's minimal. We get four thousand dollars a year for that. So I'm not too worried about that one, but emergency management and WIC. We do get good months.
Wouldn't we be able to pay our portion of it though? Cause we pay a portion of that.
The recommendation is to just.
I know.
Steer away from those and we would still have plenty of them.
And then, then that.
Salaries to apply.
Yeah, and that, that allows us to apply basically to, you know, traditional county funds to.
Guaranteed, guaranteed, right, right. We, we know that in the general fund. There's nothing that we are getting a grant for, for any kind of salaries, so.
Yeah, so. Reading and listening to all of the material that I, that I've had available, it seemed like. That's all of the consultants are pushing us in that direction.
Yes, it's the easiest.
Now, what can we do to help you uh initiate this, Cindy? Is there something that we can do? Well, you need a CPA, you need to hire. You know, I mean, it's a.
I guess I would, I would, you would have to look to First District and I'd Bailey to see how to get started with the process.
Right, like we'd have to make a motion to do that, to start that process, to get that on the agenda. Um.
We currently got two point, well, and you have through the end of twenty twenty four.
Yeah.
So if we, just a question of the process from a county perspective, then it would have been better just to wait till our regular budgeting timeframe and. And consider that revenue and then or would it be better to do a separate proceeding?
That's just it. I'm not sure how they want us to do this. They want us to take all our salaries out of the. But the specific fund that they had us build up for this money.
Right, okay, what do you know?
Maybe you're, you have a district meeting coming up. This would probably be a good topic or maybe when you get to. Conference in September, it's another thing. Um because how, you know, that could affect the budget. I mean, how are they gonna know? Like, they'll still budget the same salaries, basically. We're just gonna. Right. Compensate, reimburse that and then we'll pull off then and go into the general. Yeah, how you do that, cause that's set in there for salary. Right.
Yeah.
You know, we're, and, and I'm reading this stuff and I'm thinking, you, you know, this is a mess, but how'd you like to be at the state level though? You know, trying to figure out what they're doing. I mean, that's, that's gotta be a headache, but. Uh I mean, we need to wade into it and uh see what, what's going on.
So does anyone, anyone, have you asked anyone? We can't use it for any type of uh building projects.
You, you, yes, you could, you could.
The detention center needs.
If that's, if that's the simpler thing to do, that for some of this money, I don't think it's gonna use it all up, but yes.
But that, that's where I would start is with those types of projects. Then if we have leftover, use it for salaries, but. Yeah. To me, it would be easier to spend it on a project than have to show all those individual salaries. That we're gonna have to show every employee whose salary. Yes, it's a lot less tracking if we use it for a major project than all these individual little salaries that we have.
Would it be, would a, would a project be the replacement of the roof on the courthouse?
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
And like our furnaces out and we need generators, we need boilers. We have a lot of projects.
Yeah, yes, we do.
That we could.
So to me, those are the easier.
I know, but do they count? Doesn't it have to be related to COVID?
You ask, you ask if I know an answer, the, basically the baseline answer and I basically quit asking at the office.
Don't you come up here, I guess. We're gonna get you right on the.
Uh Luke Muller, First District, I don't know any better to talk. Basically, I've quit asking at the office. Um and it's, we've got other folks that are, that are answering these questions better, but here's basically what I. What I have surmised out of it, which is um there's no um, there's no reward for being first to the trough. Um and so that, but at some point, someone's gotta go to the trough and figure out what is. And that's basically, I think. Um I'm hearing the push and pull discussion here and realistically, that's what we've talked about too, is that. It's probably a bigger pain to track the salaries. Yet fairly comfortable that's gonna work. Have, probably have more comfort, comfort level with that. The projects are also likely to work. We just don't know which ones do and which ones don't at this point.
So I'm guessing uh Commissioner Johnson and I probably listened to the same webinar from I'd Bailey. So basically the way, okay, so you have these four big categories. Okay, and the, so three of those are like, like water systems and COVID stuff and.
That'd be easy.
More COVID stuff, okay? But the, the, the other category, the lost revenue category, because of, because they changed the formula on that. So lost revenue means you can apply it to general government. If the general government is a, is a, is a renovation or repair maintenance construction project. You know, whatever the thing is, if that's for general government, then, then yes, is what I heard the I'd Bailey consultant say. So because you're, it's kinda like, well, does that category fit? And so then. It, it doesn't matter if the general government purpose is a COVID related thing or not. It's kinda what, what I, that's how I understood it. And we probably wanna think about that some more, but um anyway.
I tell you, you've probably had more training more recently than I have.
If you use it for the wrong purpose, you're paying it back.
Oh yeah, no, I get that, but what I'm saying is that, that's the purpose of that webinar was to try to explain to us that.
Yeah. There's nothing to prevent us for budgeting for some of those projects. In the twenty twenty three budget, if we find out we can't.
Right.
Use it for that, we don't use it.
Yeah.
So.
And then use it for salary.
Well.
We know we budget for salaries all the time. And that is our, that is an expenditure, but these projects. Are the things that we have trouble finding the funds for.
The issue, the big issue with the audit, but I think it's gonna get really complicated though is if we, if, you know. It's, it's easier to, to use this money on general government stuff, whether it's salaries or whatever. Um you know, or a repair thing or, or whatever it is. As opposed to, you know, giving it to entities outside the county. It's better to free up our county funds and do, and do that. Using this money because then, then the audit requirements get really complicated when you go outside of the county.
Oh yeah, and to clarify, we are not talking about giving increases for salary.
No.
Salary. We are talking our salaries that are set by our wage scale.
Yeah, it's a match.
They're not bonuses or anything like that, correct?
No, no, it's not going, it would just.
This is not a fair question, Cindy. Just the ballpark, you know, let's see, it would cover what, four, three years?
Till twenty twenty four, December twenty four.
All right, so here's our salary for the month of.
Yeah.
February.
Ten million dollars.
Take that times twelve, that's seven point three million dollars um for one year. Granted, we can't use all of these salaries, but we can use the majority of them.
So actually, the salaries with that ten million that they're talking about would.
Well, we're only getting five point four.
Five point, so yeah, would only.
We've got two point seven so far, that's.
Yeah. We'll get an additional between the five point four and the point seven or the five point four on top of the two point seven.
The two point seven is half of what we're supposed to get. So the total would be five point four. Um. Yeah, it would, it would cover our salaries after we take out the ones, you know, that, yeah.
So to give to, so as far as process goes, so we have this other revenue. Um. And it's in a separate fund right now. It hasn't been brought in as revenue technically for this year, for say, the current budget year.
No, no, but if we wanted to use it, we can do automatic budget supplements, but it would just be.
It'd be automatic budget supplement.
But it would be better, I mean, you know, if, if a project or something, I would not start using it for salaries.
No, no, I'm talking about, say, the roof.
Yes.
Say the.
If we can use it for the roof, we can do an automatic budget supplement to the, to the government buildings budget, yes, or the jail.
Yeah, yeah, based on what, based on what, you know, the projects that are supposed to be done this year. So based upon what I've heard at the I'd Bailey seminar. It sounds like those kinds of things would fit. I mean, we'd wanna run it past.
I think they would.
Yeah, we'd wanna run it past.
That's, that's the way I would go, but that's.
Because all the things.
But it's your decision.
All the things that we have talked about are those sort of governmental improvements, basically, is what they are.
The question is, is that general government and, yeah, it's.
Well, that, that's the question. That's the answer we need.
And then you, the other careful thing we gotta be, it's like you were saying, is if we get other funding from other grant sources for any of those things.
Yeah.
You can't, you, you can't replace those funds. You gotta still use those ones.
Correct, we just would not use those salaries.
No.
Yeah, okay.
It would, would frustrate me a little bit as I'm sitting here. Uh when I was listening to all this stuff, second to third, you know, we already budget for salaries, we budget for the roof. You know, we budgeted for the air conditioning and heating out, you know, and then we're gonna apply for this grant. Well, that's wonderful, but this is my tax money, you know, and it's, but I know it's laying there on the table. We don't use it, somebody else will. And I remember, I think, many years ago, when I first came aboard here. One of the constituents told me, he said, beware of grants and these handouts. And I, and that, that still lingers in the back of my mind, you know. Uh it's, it's our money that we're spending, you know, we can remember that. So we need, I don't blame them for making us document and. And covering our tails because, you know, if we don't, somebody's gonna beat the system some way, somehow. So we just have to jump through the hoops and do what we can. But I just think we need to start talking about this and. And figuring out what way we're gonna go.
Well, we're kinda waiting.
I have to pay that two point, another two point seven million back.
I wanna make sure it's used for the purpose that it's.
If we spend it, it'll be spent in the right way.
So that's why we're just kind of pumping the brakes yet. We'll figure it out. We'll let some other county dive in first.
Like the analogy of the first to the trough.
Yeah. All right.
Are there any other counties that are kicking us down the road or is there?
I'm gonna be smart enough not to talk anymore.
We'll get Todd in here and put him on the hot seat.
Yeah, I, actually, I'll, I'll bring that up to him about this discussion and potentially for Sebelly Commissioner.
Yes, that would be good. The more clarification we get exactly what that determination is, so we know what we can spend it on.
Then we're gonna need checkboxes that say yes or no.
They aren't gonna give you that. Nobody wants to.
No, I know.
Try to read that stuff?
Yeah.
You read this whole page of. You read this whole page of stuff and then they'll say, accept.
That's why you have those the I Baileys of the world to help us.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did put a couple of other things in your packets, just information on public meetings regarding the carbon transport pipeline project that will be going through Paddington County. There are various meetings across the state. I did. I got information from the PUC and from an attorney's firm. Just for your information.
Thank you.
All right, item number twenty eight, then, executive session. I don't know of a need. Does anyone else have a need? Natalie's, what do you have any need, Natalie?
Move to adjourn.
Did she say no?
Today.
Okay, all right. Motion by Johnson to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, that motion carries. We are adjourned. Tell me next week.
Thank you, JT. Thank you guys. About today.
Thanks, Natalie. Have a good week.
I have a couple articles.